Planning Board Meeting of December 1st, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the December 1st, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to this current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. You can't hear me at all? Okay. The Acts of 2022, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2023.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you're seeking to participate remotely, you can do so via the following. Go to townofberlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number is (2342) 652-8253. And you can also join by phone at (1617) 315-0704. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. It's also being streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx service Q&amp;A function, and all persons wishing to ask a question must identify themselves prior to speaking.
Thank you, Liz. First item on our agenda is the Marshall Simons Middle School Lego League Robotics Team. Would you please join us in front? Just want to come in front of the microphones over here. And if you could state your name for us. You want to come on to the right side of the microphones. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shetty. I am in the 5th grade, and I go to Francis Wyman Elementary School.
I'm Noah Mello. I'm in 7th grade, and I go to Marshall Simons Middle School.
I'm Evan Peckham, and I go to Marshall Simons Middle School.
I'm Orion Dash, and I also go to Marshall Simons Middle School.
Great, thanks for joining us. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
First Lego League is a competition where you get to show your STEM skills with Legos. There are a few judging scenarios such as core values, the robot game, robot design, and the innovation project.
The challenges for the innovation project this year is to improve something on the energy journey.
Our original plan was to harness the energy from sewage flowing through sewage pipes.
We named ourselves the Sewage Sabers, and this is our original model.
We went to the DPW and met with Brian White. He told us that sewage would clog our wheel.
We had to provide our project and decide who clogged energy from the water pipes in Burlington. These are some water in Burlington.
Hence, we became the Rainy.
We needed help learning how to generate electricity with our water wheel, so we went to our teachers, Mr. Hodges and Ms. Marcus, for help.
They gave us advice and showed us how to use a generator.
So this was our first generation. So we made 900 subvolt.
This is our second iteration. We got a reading of 112 volts and a 30% increase.
This is our third iteration. We added pegs to it, thinking that it would block the water from going inside of it, and we were wrong. And it went down back to 0.1 voltages, with an increase of 25%.
And so next, we removed the blue pegs, and we added sides to the front of the paddles to save more water, and we went back to the same situation.
So this was our fifth iteration. We got about 8% increase to the 1300 subvolt, and we added bumpers on the side to the right.
This is our sixth iteration. We added gear to make this one faster, to make motor faster. And it definitely worked. We got 0.3 volts and about 192% increase.
We talked to an FRC team member named Chris, who gave us advice on how to add another gear without making them stick, and his advice worked.
We got an increase of about 224%, and it went all the way up to 1,230 voltage.
And sadly, we can't do a demo because our motor burnt out on us, but this is what our water wheel would look like without the motor, of course. It would go on here, and our gears would be here. And we measured our voltage with this multimeter. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much.
That was cute. That was cute.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We wish you the best on your journey and future presentations. Thank you. We have some continuances off of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 2B out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Help us in favor? We need to do roll call because we have remote. So, Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? She's nodding. Gaffney? He's also nodding. Covino? Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Item B is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Planning Board Town Center Design Rules and Regulations submitted by the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of January 5th, 2023.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make another motion to take Item 8K out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Item K is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.1.14G. Wireless communications facilities, which are subject to Section 8.4.0, shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of Section 1.0 of the zoning bylaws of the zoning bylaws, 72 Center Street. Smart Link on behalf of AT&amp;T is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of January 5th, 2023, at the request of the applicant in an email dated November 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Impemba is not here. Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
6-0.
May I have another motion, please? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 8.1, or sorry, 8.0, 8.1, 8.0, 8.0, together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Item L is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, nonbiologic medicine, and physics of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item N is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.1. Life Science Laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturing, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, bio safety level 4 BL4 Laboratories is defined as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, which are prohibited in the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item N is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.2. Life Science Laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental, biomedical devices, bio safety level 4 BL4 Laboratories, as defined by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, which are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item O is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals used for storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item P is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.11. Generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator, BSQG, of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of January 5th, 2023, at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated December 1st, 2022.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a joint meeting this evening of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. At this time, I'd like to begin our joint meeting with the committees of the town meeting to discuss an item to be printed in the warrant for January town meeting.
May I have a motion, please? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take a recess from the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting and open the joint meeting of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue? Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Who is here representing Land Use Committee? Who is here representing the Land Use Committee? Would you please join us up front? And would you please join us up front and roll call your committee for the record?
Dave Webb, Precinct 7, I'm the Chair of the Land Use Committee, and we have Zee Wang.
I sent out whatever was in the meeting preview is the latest I have. I did get a recent one not long ago from the land use committee, like probably.
One that was sent out at like four thirty.
It was sent out at four thirty.
Four thirty today?
Yes.
Yeah, today.
Okay. I haven't had a chance to look at that, but um.
So.
So like, I'm not sure I can comment. I'll comment on the one that I had, uh, that I had received if you want. Um, again, I thought this was going to replace what we have here, but the language, at least what I saw written is that was adding additional signs on every property, electronic signs on every town property. Did that get revised?
That's my understanding, yep.
It did revise, okay. I guess, I guess, I guess I'm, 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 I'm at a disadvantage because I didn't get a chance to look at the, uh, at the latest one, but, uh, my concern, I think everyone knows I'm on, I was on the ZB, uh, the zoning board of appeals for fifteen years and had a lot of experience in signage. Uh, I think as this is the gateway to Burlington, we would limit it just to this particular location and not the others, for the other locations around town for every town property. I don't know if that's, again, in the, in the latest one, but I think what you want to have here is something that might be externally lit, but you can do electronically. Um, and again, I know the examples, at least the, the one I saw that they were showing here with heads, you could have moving pictures and you could had, have different things, uh, because that's what technology is, but, uh, you know, with the, I think we ta- I talked to Sally the last time she was here, that if we were thinking about the town center, excuse me, being a village, you know, the, the electronic signage, we probably want to keep it at a minimum in having to the, I would say, kind of first-class electronic signage, right? So, you know, not, not a person coming across the screen with the little vote today sign. You want to have it voting at the high school today, similar to what you have here. But I think there's technology today that it can be externally lit versus an internal lit. I think all the examples I, I saw here on this document are something that we wouldn't really want to see, uh, in the, uh, in the, in the gateway to the town. There, for example, right to the, to upper left, you have graphics, right? Very high-definition graphics that you might see at Gillette Stadium, for example. I think you want it, you want to stay away from that. I think you want to stay away from what you're seeing here as well, uh, with regard to temperature and time and things that can change. So you really want to have it, and I can probably provide you some examples of a kind of first-class electronic signage, but you still have it from externally lit. I think that type of technology. I like some of the things on the left with regard to natural, uh, you know, natural material, if that's where it's going to be on the, uh, on the town center for sure. But the rest of the examples, I wouldn't say we, we use that is, is what we want to see right there.
Madam Chair.
So again, if I can, if I can have a chance at some point, uh, before this is voted on, I don't know if I have to start reading it now or we vote on it the next meeting to, uh, to see where we're at with the current form. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Um, Madam Chair, through you, um, so I got a, an updated file, um, bylaw that is from the ZBRC. You have received Bill the latest iteration of the warrant article from the applicant, which is the select board. So this afternoon, we did receive, um, edits from the ZBRC. Um, and I'm sure they will be talking about them in a few minutes. So what you did see, what you got in the, what we did, received in the meeting preview is what, what the latest iteration of the bylaw.
Uh, Member LaRue, did you have a question?
Um, yes, um, just a couple of comments, really. Um, I agree with Bill that we have to be very careful, and I don't think that we should have anything that is changing at all. So, for example, the one that we're looking at right now with the temperature and the time that will change, I think that would be problematic. Um, I'd like to see something stationary. And is there anything in the documentation about materials, or is that something that will be decided after going to town meeting?
So I, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I believe right now it's worded, uh, based on the ZBRC wording, which is, uh, electronic or illuminated sign. And I know that electronic definition involves the electrophoretic e-ink sign-based language, if I recall correctly. Uh, but that illuminated has its own definition, so we'd be abiding by those. anticipation of the passing of the efforts that the science bylaws up to me has been doing. Uh, in terms of the changing, uh, you know, I, I, I think a mild change, maybe once an hour or once every few hours, won't, won't be distracting to drivers if we're looking to have multiple messages up, uh, especially if we're talking about, you know, having voting up and also having a public, a li- event at the library or something like that. So, uh, if you'd be amenable to the notion of, you know, a couple of changes a day where we can have multiple messaging and make sure that folks can be informed.
Distracting to drivers, knowing that the police department, you know, hasn't had any concerns with it, um, it would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think this is.
I think the character that you, instead of talking about the, the safety, I think what I'm looking at is the character of the town on that. Again, a, a very, uh, you know, this, this is the flagship area of the town. And again, even ha- having changing signs at that point, I agree with, uh, uh, Member LaRue, that it, it would be for the message of the day. If you look back at the ones that you have on the post, it's, it's a static message. If you go into other towns that have those type of nice, uh, what we say colonial type of towns, they have the banners as well. It's static. Um, I think you want to keep the static approach to it, if, if you're going to go like electronic. That would be my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Chair Priest, will you have a? Barbara, give me one second, and then I'll hand it back to you. Will you have a final design, um, to present before town meeting? Do you think?
I believe that was our hope, right? Uh, was to have.
Something, I mean, the hope is to work with the ZBRC and land use to make sure, um, that it, you know, gets as close to the vision as possible, so that we're being consistent. Um, I think this corner might be a little bit more unique. Uh, you know, given the placement, so that, you know, drivers can see it and, you know, the, the, the like of that, but, um, the, the hope is to have something close to final, if not final, yes.
And who will be, who's going to be part of that group of deciding what exactly the materials that are be using and the design and such?
I, I, I would hope it would be all of us.
Okay. Uh, Member LaRue, thank you.
Um, a couple of quick things. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I can understand that the way this is worded, this will be the only location where we are, we are allowing this type of sign, because this is not what we're we want to allow throughout the town or throughout the town center. Am I correct in that understanding that this would be the one and only?
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, and when you said all of us, did you mean, could you define what you mean by that?
Sure, sorry, Barbara, I was, I was visually, uh, just to go into.
Folks here in the room, um, the planning board, ZBRC and land use, along with the select board, uh, taking charge and leading the way. Um, you know, I think that it's important, you know, given all of the wheels that are moving right now, that, you know, we have uh, some input from everybody, so the select board can, you know, get it to a good spot and we can get it up and, and running.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Gaffney?
Yeah, just, just, I guess, the question to, to Member LaRue's. So, uh, we're going to be able to write in the language of, of the bylaw that says it, they only going to allow two signs at the property and be specific on location? How are you going to manage that?
I believe it's currently already worded as one sign at a specific location.
Uh, okay, maybe I didn't look at the latest one, but one you, you presented, it said two signs on every town property is what I read, I thought, right?
Oh, I think it's already one sign there, understood. Right, 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 okay.
So, again, again, it may be, again, it may be, I, I'm not seeing the most recent one, but it says two, two signs and they can be electronic on any town property. Is, is that going to be changed?
So, so.
He doesn't have the most updated.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Bill, you definitely don't have the most updated, but, but to, to summarize what the most updated one says, that it accounts for the current town of Burlington sign, which exists, uh, which faces Cambridge Street, uh, Cambridge Street, and for the electronic sign, it'll only be those two locations.
Okay, so let me, let me just try to be clear with my staff here. So the latest one that I have is not the latest one that, that applicants.
So I have them printed out for people here, Bill.
Okay.
Could be the issue. Um, I will double check to make sure that you get the latest one.
Okay.
The two signs were referring to the already existing town of Burlington sign and the new electronic sign that has been edited, so it would only be one electronic sign. Is that correct?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Email that over to him. I mean, I know it was.
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll take it now if you got it. Email it to me. I'll take a look.
It's, it's in the, it is in the meeting.
Meeting preview.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen those again. I, I work a day job, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to look what you sent later this afternoon, so thank you.
It is in the meeting preview that was sent on the twenty ninth.
And is that the same one that you guys have?
It is not.
It, it's not the same. If you put it up on the screen.
I, I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, uh, Member Gaffney, we'll, we'll get that over to you or put it on screen.
Thank you.
Chair Webb, is, do you or anyone from the, um, the land use committee have any comments that you'd like to make?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, not too much. We've sort of, um, well, I've become aware of this in the last couple of weeks.
Um, I guess one question I have is, uh, cost, is, is, has anybody discussed what something like this might cost? Overall, no, it's preliminary, but.
Yeah, we've had a, a, a couple of, um, demonstrations and we, we believe the cost will, uh, range between twenty and thirty thousand, depending upon, you know, how elaborate you get with the screen, there's various levels of the screen, as well as what type of base and uh, encasement you may choose, you know, real brick, uh, stone yard, so. It, it will vary, but within that range, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, uh, Xi Wang is on, uh, line. Xi, do you have anything? Do you have, I guess, yeah. I guess not, I guess not.
No, no, she needs to be unmuted, hold on.
Yeah, I, I.
Oh, actually, sorry, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay.
I just figured out how to unmute myself.
Yeah.
Got a new computer. Um, so who's exactly in charge of this sign? If something goes wrong, like who do I, uh, contact to? And, uh, or if, um, uh, say land use want to, uh, post a message, and then, uh, who do we talk to? Just like select board?
Yeah, so the, the, the central admin office is the current, um, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Administrator of, uh, the, the corner of the sign as it is, so that would maintain this new sign.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Ellis, do you or anyone from your group have anything that you'd like to?
Sure, as, um, Liz mentioned earlier, I sent over some edits, if you want to call them, in the sense of basically how. Grammatical formatting kind of things that I sent over earlier today. Um, but notwithstanding, I've, I think that we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago where we discussed in general kind of the idea and the concept of this. And that's where the comments came from that we sent to the select board and they've incorporated some of those comments here. Um, so I don't know if any of the members um, have any other comments, um, in addition to that, now that everything's been incorporated. So if, through you, the chair, if they can comment first and then I'll come back and explain kind of what I sent over.
Sure.
So, Betsy's here first, if that's.
Good evening.
Um, hi, I'm, I'm Betsy Hughes on, uh, zoning bylaw, uh, review. Um, so a number of my questions been answered, so thank you, but, and, and I'm, I'm really glad that this is actually something that we're talking about, so, uh, we need something there. And I agree with Bill, it needs to be a first-class electronic sign. I'm happy that the pictures that were here have been discussed, because I, I actually had a visceral reaction to many of those that were not positive, so I'm hoping that we can up, upgrade that a bit. Um, but I'm wondering for town meeting and as we move forward, it feels to me like we need to get more specific on some of this. I think this bylaw is written in a very general way. Um, and I think it needs, either tightened up here or the presentation needs to be tightened up to, um, to identify a very specific concept plan. Um, with dimensions, uh, there are specific dimensions in the bylaws today. There's six by ten. It's going to be tough, I think, to do six by ten in, in this kind of a sign, so it'd be better for you to figure that out before you get to town meeting, because you don't want to have to come back later and say, oh, whoops, we really need ten by twelve or something, so. Uh, I don't know if you have a consultant that you're working with on this. This is a real specific technical area, and I'm not a designer, but I have a really good friend who is. And they've told me that this is, can be really complex really fast. So if you don't, I'd encourage you to get somebody who is an expert in this area. Um, and then in terms of the location, we keep talking about the corner, but the corner represents a lot of space in there. There's a power box or something there as well. How this is going to sit relative to that, and then the relationship to the pedestrians, I think that should also go into the concept plan. Um, because these are all things that to be thorough and to help town meeting, um, support this initiative, I'd encourage you to, to do. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the select board or any of the other committees, uh, that have anything else to, Member Gaffney?
Oh, Kathy's up there, too.
Yeah, thank you. Just as I was listening in, uh, the good question about that particular spot and where the highway sign is, is on the other side on Simons Park. And if we kind of think about this a little bit, again, this is the first time I'm, I'm really, we're hearing it, uh, in the public. It's for, for, again, it's not the first time, not the second time, not the third time, we're seeing things kind of last minute to get to January town meeting, right to the, to, to racetrack there. Um, kind of rushed, if I can say that. Um, has, have we thought about maybe putting it where the highway sign is over at the Simons Park area versus at the corner of the, of the town common? You know, just maybe to, to, to either break it up a bit or, you know, to have it on a place where, you know, instead of the town common, where you, you, if you think about town common, you get a sense of that versus Simons Park, where you got the highway sign now. Is, was that a better spot? Uh, right there versus, you know, we have some nice trees and bushes right in the corner there. It's right, it's very close uh, to the road there where the highway sign is a bit standoffish a little bit. Um, as I think about it, maybe the Simons Park corner might be a better spot for that. It might, you know, just because I thought about it, again, the first time I'm thinking about it and from the feedback of the other folks that had commented on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, Bill, we, we did talk about it, uh, you know, the, the general concern with the, the Simons property is the height, right? So the DBW sign faces down Cambridge Street, um, and it works in that regard, but if you want to face it into the, into the intersection, it doesn't work. Um, at least, you know, from, from what we've looked at. Uh, I mean, if you want to approve two signs, we'll happily take them. Uh, but, but, uh, you know, we thought replacing the one existing sign, uh, where it was, you know, was, was at least the, the, the smart first step to the whole process.
Right, Paul said, suck what doesn't control Simons Park, so we'd be involving rec commission at that point as well.
Thank you. Member LaRue?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to ask a question about the timing. Is it necessary that we vote on this tonight? Because it seems like there are some outstanding issues. Would it be possible for us to take a vote on this in our first January meeting, so we could get some of these questions answered?
Um, so.
Print deadline for the warrant is the ninth. So that is why this is happening.
Jan- January ninth?
Um.
I think she meant December ninth, right?
It did mean December ninth. That's what we have in our calendar.
Yeah, I see, I see January nine.
Deadline for January town meeting.
If that's the case, then.
Um, I mean, it sounds like the select board is working very hard on this, and I assume that they're going to be making changes based upon these discussions and those that they're having with the other committees, so that what they present on the ninth would be different from what we're seeing tonight. Would there, so I'm wondering if it would be better for us to vote on that at our first January meeting, because then we know exactly what we're voting on.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Something to think about.
I, I think we're kind of just where we are. I think we're.
Is it?
Go ahead.
Is, uh, to the selectmen, is there going to be another, uh, were you anticipating another public meeting, uh, maybe it's a select board, uh, to discuss this further or not?
I mean, yeah, there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen, so I mean, we'd happily utilize any public meeting between the, the multiple boards to, to make it happen. Uh, so we have our meeting on the twelfth, uh, which comes up next, and then, uh, I don't know when you're next.
You wanted the language, you wanted the language, uh, therefore before the twelfth, right?
Yeah, we're working fast and furious. Paul?
I, I would just add, Madam Chair, that, um, I don't know that the text of the actual zoning will change much unless, um, you know, we incorporate some of, I haven't seen the ZBRC's most recent comments, but it sounds like we'd be more focused subsequent to that on the actual design of the sign prior to town meeting, if we can, um, agree that the, the zoning language works for that corner. Um, then I think that we can probably still, um, have a bunch of meetings around designing the sign, if that's, um, what the, the board would, what's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Thanks. So, ZBRC has a meeting on the fourteenth. Um, my understanding from the email from Lynn Mills is that the print deadline was December nineteenth.
Okay, so we need to men, so that's our, that's our internal planning board calendar needs to be changed.
There's all final.
That's what I understood, so I thought we had another meeting, in which case I'm happy to open it up to whoever from planning, land use, whoever, and we can have another discussion so that we can get a final print prior to the nineteenth, if that is indeed, you know, the correct date. If it is the ninth, then we're out of luck, but, um.
Staff, can you confirm that date?
Yes, it's, yes, it's not.
In the interim, we do have two other folks that are, um, that are online.
Sally or Kathy, Kathy Byer, Sally Willard.
Thank you. Um, Sally, good evening.
Uh, good evening, thank you. Um, uh, I, I do have a couple of questions, uh, and one, um, one has to do with the corner and, uh, how this would be presented. Um, you know, if you, if you drive up north, if you're going north on Cambridge Street, or you're going east on Bedford Street, you can easily see the current signs. Uh, the banners that are placed across. If you're going south on Cambridge or west on Bedford, you're not likely to see that, see that banner. So I think that, uh, attention to detail on where that sign might be placed, um, is very important. Uh, I, I, I'd also like to see going forward that that there be something specified about the review of the proposals. Uh, when, when you think about it, if, if what was decided was the Everett High School sign. Um, and there was no public review of that, I think that there are a lot of people in town who might be a little disappointed and then say, whoa, we don't want any of these anywhere, because how do we know we're not going to get more of the Everett High School? Um, and it's not that, that's not an appropriate sign. Uh, it, it's just that it may not be the most appropriate sign for, um, Burlington's town center. Um, and, and then the other, uh, the other thing that I had a question about was, uh, the changeable uh, nature of the signs. Now, um, today, if you put up a banner, you've got one banner. And that banner is there for some amount of time before an event takes place. You know, there's the election banner, and that's up there. Early voting is up there for, say, a week or two. There's a library book sale, that's up there for three or four days or a, a week before the library book sale. Or whatever event is being celebrated. So the, the notion that we would have something that might change text on an hourly basis or on a, you know, on a, you know, more than once a week to me says that we're uh, perhaps promoting more than, than we might otherwise be promoting. Because you, you need something to stand in front of people for a while before, before you change it, so that they notice it. You know, if you're driving by at eight in the morning and it says, oh, town election coming up, and then you drive by at five in the afternoon and it's, oh, come to a, a, a celebration at the sculpture park, then it, you're, you're not getting the right messages in front of the, in front of the people who are driving by. And I just think that to say that, well, it might change every hour or every two hours or three hours, I, I think that the current model of a banner that's there for a, a, a limited amount of time, but for long enough for people to see it, I think that's a good, a much better model than saying, well, it might change every hour or every two hours and. Um, I, I really would like to just, uh, close by saying, I hope that whenever something is put forward, that there will be a public meeting to review, um, the proposed signs and that there will be more than one. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
Uh, so Sally, just in your response, while I disagree with your notion.
And changing, um, I'm hoping that tonight we can focus on the zoning amendment itself and the design of the sign. I think we can, we can consider ourselves with the policy after that gets through. Um, and I'm more than happy to entertain the conversation, you know, once, if, assuming that that happens through town meeting, uh, never want to be presumptuous. Um, and then, you know, with regard to, um, I just lost my train of thought, so it doesn't matter. That's what I, that's, that's what I get for showing up at eight o'clock, right?
You got lost, you got lost to the color red for the red sign.
Oh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out, uh, one of the reasons, um, that the board is interested in the sign changing is we do currently have conflicts with multiple groups that want to use the corner at the same time. And one of the things that's changed in the recent years was the addition of early voting, which is now a couple of weeks before each election, and it's certainly something we want to promote, um, as well, and we have gotten to the point now where we have the library calling about wanting to put the book sale up, but we have the voting stuff up there, so it has, um, started, be- begun to generate conflict, um, in terms of what sign, uh, goes on the corner and when.
Thank you. Um, we have one more comment, um, online. I'm sorry.
Kathy.
Kathy Byer.
Hi, Kathy.
Hello. Thank you. Um, I'm just looking at, I, I don't have the latest edited version that was up on the screen earlier. But what I was looking at when I saw the A subsection thirteen point one point five point one and revisions. Um, either that is a long run-in, run-on sentence with a comma splice, or it, 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 it needs to be edited. It may be two sentences, and the same thing for the section B. And then down under that, the paragraph with the changes, uh, after the first comma is any the freestanding sign. And so there are small things in here that I'm sure the ZBRC would go and do a fine-tune editing on this to make sure that it was ready for prime time. And so if there's a way that could be done, uh, I would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, go ahead.
Just, uh, one quick, uh, thought in, in, uh, what Paul was saying about, uh, two people wanting to use it at the same time, uh, that may, might be a reason to make it larger than you're thinking, so that you can actually have two events on the same screen at the same time. And one on the top, one on the bottom. Early voting and then library, you know, something like that. That, who knows? I mean, it may not work, but just popped. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the public that has any questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to make at this time? I don't think so.
Staff, do we iron out that date?
Um, I just brought it up. So this is from Lynn Mills, so, um, you're correct. Our internal calendar said the ninth, it's the nineteenth.
Okay, so we have time.
Um, but this, so we, but so the final planning board meeting needs to be forty-five days before, so December eighth, so even if we were to hold the meeting on the fifteenth, it would be too late to meet the deadline.
So you guys have to vote then.
We have to vote today? Yes.
The meeting has to be then, or the?
The planning board, in order for a zoning article to go on the warrant, the planning board needs to make a ma- recommendation.
Okay.
But not necessarily before the print.
By the eighth, you just said, right? I just.
We, we have often met, actually, and, and I'm not trying to, um, we, we have often met the night of town meeting to make that recommendation.
Um, I.
Unless that's been changed, that bylaw's been changed, that?
Um, this is what I'm getting. I think that we need to make a vote forty-five days before town meeting. I don't want to get in trouble with town council.
You can probably, if something changes and there's an edit or that something's changed, then you can take another vote? Or not? I mean, that would be.
I think we, once we voted, we voted, but, uh, okay, I'm sorry.
I would like to vote. I would like to vote this evening, I mean, this is a recommendation?
It's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Sure.
Does anyone else just?
With some language that says, based on.
What are you going to vote on, though? I mean, people have different copies of different things, I'm sorry, I mean, this is not my business, it's yours, but it appears that. They should vote on what was sent out by the Select Board.
Correct.
Not the ones, because Lisa Mead updated the one that was sent out by the Select Board. That's the Select Board version.
So I have, this is the Select Board version, and Lynn Mills sent it out, and that's the one that was on the, on, the latest one I had was on Wednesday, I sent out the meeting preview with that, that language in it on Wednesday to everybody on the board. So any edits that ZBRC has made.
It's not part of that, right?
The board, that's not, so what you're voting on, what is in the meeting preview, what is in front of you right now?
Okay, member Gaffney?
I'm Lynn Mills.
Stand up.
Yep.
It takes a little bit to get the unmute there.
I think it's a system unmute, somebody has to allow you to do that. If you can, if you can allow, I think we have a pretty good audience here, if you can allow people to unmute themselves, I think it might work better. But yeah, I, I would not be in a position to, to vote on it today. I'd have to probably, if it's, if it's the one I've seen, which was, I, I think it had multiple signs on every town, every town property, I, I really couldn't support that, and again, with an edited one that I haven't seen, I wouldn't be in a position to vote on that tonight, and I think to Ms. Willard's point of having the conditions of they're very specific on when that's going to change, which hopefully it doesn't, on an hourly or, you know, very periodic basis, I would be opposed to something like that, but I think you need to have that in the bylaw to be very specific, instead of having a policy later on. You know, let's, let's, let's get that out there, if it's going to change on a, on a weekly basis, if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna zoom in, you're gonna zoom out, you're gonna have a flip around from the, from the vote to the library, I think we want to be very, very specific on what, what you've got in store for that sign and put that in the bylaw. So I think it's gonna, I think personally, again, ZBA for fifteen years, going into signs is very, very difficult, because it takes a lot to understand what has to go into it versus, you know, what I saw on the proposal was very, very, very basic, and it needs a little bit more specifics, so we can, we can vote on it intelligently, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
So, Bill, I think, I have to disagree, I think that when it comes to the operation of the sign, there has to be a separate policy, if we lock that into a bylaw, that means that if it needs to change, we need to go back to town meeting for that. And again, that has to be decided in public view at a Select Board meeting, and by, by all means, please come to those and be a part of the conversation, for all intents and purposes, I'll, I'll set up a separate subcommittee and we can have a conversation about it, and you can be a part of it, I quite frankly don't care, you know, but I mean, when it comes to, Bill, sorry, Bill.
If you had a policy today, the sign, I think that you'd be in a better spot, but you, now, I don't know what timeframe you're thinking, but it could be right before you put the sign up. If you had a policy now, or had the opportunity to work on a policy, again, this, this is, in my opinion, rushed to get to town meeting, we've seen this before, and when that happens, it doesn't usually end well. So if you have a policy, you can work on the policy, again, we can have maybe an emergency meeting once you get the policy in, the sign bylaw, very specific, I think, you know, I'd be able to participate and I'd be able to vote on it. Right now, I, I'm really, there's not much for me to vote on, to be quite honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Member LaRue?
I, I share some of Bill's concerns, I actually feel very comfortable that this is going to be one location, one only sign, you know, that's what the Select Board is telling us, even if the wording is a little confusing, but I, I believe that will be worked out, and I trust that it will be done that way. But I do wonder if maybe it would make sense for us to just plan to have a, a WebEx meeting on December eighth with just this one item on the agenda, we all would have had a chance to see the refined language and possibly a policy that goes along with it. I, I think, I see that separate in that sort of a Select Board thing, it would be nice if we can read it at the same time, though. I, I wonder if that's possible for us to do that, it could be a really quick meeting, because we'd all have the language and everything ahead of time. What does everyone think of that?
Steph, is that, will that align with our needs? So according to Lynn, all final planning board hearing is due December eighth, because we need to make a motion forty-six day before town meeting, so that's December eighth. I would have to look at our calendar and see what's going, so the eighth is a Friday?
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
It's a week from today.
Yeah. I mean, it's up to you, Madam Chair.
I mean, this is a recommendation, they could do this without our vote, whether.
Yes, that's true.
So, you know, I, I think that we need to really kind of take that into consideration, I think the Select Board is telling us that they're, they're going to work with us, and that we're all going to be a part of this, and this is, again, just a recommendation that's going to go in front of town meeting, and town meeting is really going to be the one who decides whether or not this is going to happen. Do I think we can have another meeting? Sure, but I'm kind of on the fence. Member Cavino?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, not to, not to necessarily disagree with Bill, but the planning board has designed rules and regulations for the town center, where the look and feel and whatever is spelled out, and I assume that the Select Board would have rules and regulations for the town commons sign, and those rules and regulations are voted on by just the board, Planning Board in, in the town center's case, and with a, with a caveat that we won't change them at the first meeting they're brought up, and that would, that it will be a public hearing, so I have confidence in our elected public officials, just I hope as they have confidence in us, and I'd be willing to vote.
Thank you, thank you, Member Cavino. Mr. Brennan, Member Brennan.
Thank you, I, I just wanted to, before we go any further, I want to remind everyone that this, it's more than a sign, it's, it's a message board, and we, and to restrict us with specific language as to how many times a day or a week we can, we can make a change to that board, we have public health emergencies we may have to address, we have traffic emergencies that we may have to address, and from time to time, make adjustments to the sign, so any restrictions to the bylaw that says we, we can't, we can only put up one sign for a specific, one message for a specific period of time, it's just not going to work for us.
Thank you, thank you.
Could I ask one question?
Of course.
Are we limited to one sign?
That's what this is.
That's what this, this was supposed to say.
Okay, but I was just curious.
Member LaRue?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, my hand was up from the last time, I almost had.
Thank you. Ms. Byer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you vote tonight, are you voting on the language that I see up in, on my screen that does not contain all of the changes or corrections to format that Ms. Ellis presented?
Correct. I think that is correct.
That is correct, then I can tell you that if ZBRC came back and put in the suggested changes to all the language, that either we are going to have to put up an amendment from the floor, which will necessitate reading the entire document here, and it will be confusing to people voting from the floor, and/or we're going to have to come back and put in another article for the May town meeting, and so I, I just look at this and see that what you're looking at voting on tonight is not ready for prime time. I think that we all agree with the concept, but, but if you're looking at putting the article into practice, I think it should be the best that we can put in front of town meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Priest?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Kathy's point, I think that if we're all in agreement on the bigger picture, and that we're assessing out grammatical things and sentence structure, that, you know, we seem to be all at least having the same conversation, and we're more than happy to make adjustments grammatical otherwise, you know, take them under consideration, you know, as we approach time, I mean, we've read plenty of long, arduous things, and like Member Cavino, I have faith in our local officials that they wouldn't mind, you know, one, one solid reading at least one town meeting. It wouldn't be a town meeting without one reading, I mean, right?
Well, these changes can be made on the fourteenth at CBRC.
Exactly.
And then it will go into print, it will, you will have voted on a different version, but the concept is still there, it's the grammatical or formatting, and, you know, the, the rest of that is, it's still, you're voting on the, the concept.
Okay, so we can vote on the concept with modifications to grammatical changes.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Member LaRue, are you still up, or are you waving?
No, that's, actually, what you just said is what I was going to suggest, can we sort of modify the motion, so we are, or, or voting on this concept and saying that we approve of the concept, but that the details have not yet been worked out.
Okay, yes. And one more, Ms. Willard.
Thank you, so I, I'm just curious, are you voting on the original proposal from the, from the selectmen that allows electronic signs on every town property? Or are you voting on what the, what town council sent out in, in response to some questions submitted? I'm, I'm just wondering if it's, if it's the original proposal that allows two signs on every municipal property, or if there's an amended version that simply was not on the screen this evening? Thank you.
Did you put the amended version, or what did you put on the screen?
What I put on the screen earlier was the version that I got from Sherri Ellis. The version that I received was, the latest version was on Wednesday, and that is the amended version based upon the comments from ZBRC.
Which includes one sign.
Which includes one sign on the common, one sign.
This is a public hearing, is there any other comments, questions, concerns? Barbara, you back up again?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right.
I think, as Kathy Byer said, we're all in agreement about this concept, I think we, I would like to see us vote on this so that it can move forward, but in, come up with a different motion that sort of clarifies exactly what we're voting on and what we're not voting on, because we don't really have all the details, but I also think maybe we need to have a meeting offline with Select Board, because this shouldn't have happened this way, in such a rushed manner. It's a really important thing, and I'm glad that the Select Board is doing this, because the sign really does need to be updated, but it's really hard for us to vote on something that's so ambiguous.
Okay.
So I would request that the meeting take place offline.
Understood and agreed. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
You want a motion to, the Planning Board is in favor of the concept?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's the way we should move it forward.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the concept within the petition to amend Article thirteen, sign regulations of the zoning bylaw as requested by Select Board with details, grammatical, et cetera, to be worked out at a later time.
Second.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Epstein.
Cavino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
So we have five, zero one is the vote, so the motion passes, and so we will see you soon on this concept.
Absolutely, thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience during this time.
Certainly, anyone from the Planning Board or Land Use is welcome, we'll have this as an agenda item on the fourteenth at six thirty, and it's a online meeting.
It's remote.
So I can send out the meeting link.
That would be wonderful, thank you very much, thank you everyone again for your patience during this matter. May I have another motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and zoning bylaw review today.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Right, item three on our agenda is public participation.
There's one more, just, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return from recess and resume the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Item three on our agenda is the public participation, each participant will be allowed three minutes and must identify themselves prior to speaking. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda? Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'm Dave Webb, town meeting member, Land Use Chair, but I'm really here tonight as a board member of the Friends of Mary Cummings Park, and, and Steve O'Leary is here, he's the president of the Friends, and we'd like to bring up an issue involving the Northeastern University site in Burlington. In, late in two thousand seventeen, you approved, the Planning Board approved a site plan for a drone cage on, on the property, and this predated the site decision for the building itself, which is, was constructed after this. So the drone cage first, came first, unfortunately, we of the Friends were not aware of this at the time, and we attended all the Northeastern building discussions at the time, and in May of two thousand eighteen, the Planning Board approved the site plan for this new building in a decision which is dated May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. I've discussed it with Barbara LaRue and Liz, so hopefully you have a copy, you've been able to come up with a copy of this. So this is four years ago, and there's several issues in here that are of concern, concerning Mary Cummings Park. Northeastern University, this, this plot in Burlington sits right in the middle of Mary Cummings Park, and the drone cage that was approved in two thousand seventeen and built very quickly consists of four very large metal pillars, around which is, is a cage of material, a transparent cage, in which they were supposed to be testing flying drones as part of government contracts. So in this decision in May of two thousand eighteen, we added, with the Planning Board's approval, in item twenty-eight of that document, and I'll just read, this is very short, pursuant to condition seven of the site plan waiver decision dated October eleventh, two thousand seventeen regarding the adjacent drone cage, the Planning Board requests that the cage and netting be dismantled should Northeastern University and/or its affiliates cease use of said cage. The structure and netting shall be removed within six months of the date the cage is no longer in use. Now, first of all, the cage is a, is a pretty ugly structure that sits at the highest point of Mary Cummings Park. Park. It's very obvious to everybody who's walking through the park, and you can see it from almost anywhere in the park, especially when the leaves drop the trees like now. So, and I don't think any of us at the board have ever seen any drones being tested in this cage or any activity in the cage. Now, that doesn't mean they haven't tested drones like late at night and so forth. We don't know. But I think it behooves us to find out if they're still using this cage. And if not, I think according to this article in the decision document, that the cage should be removed. So, that's, that's our request that I guess the planning board should check into this. And obviously, this, this needs discussion with Northeastern also on what the current status of that drone cage is.
Steph, have you reached out to Northeastern?
Yes. So, I have reached out to Peter Boynton, who's the head of that campus. And I have, I've reached out to him. I have not received an answer yet, but I will definitely follow up and find out. So, that's.
So, I mean, they could have a contract. There could be a five-year contract. They may not be using it at this point in time, but they paid for the contract. So, it would be six months post-contract. But as soon as staff knows, we'll circle back and we'll let you know where that stands.
Okay. They, they did at, at the time of the planning board meeting in two thousand eighteen, they did assure us that when their contract was up, they would remove the drone cage. But it'd be nice to know what the situation is.
Sure. You know, without knowing that date of that contract, we can't really do anything at this time. But as soon as we do, we will, again, we'll circle back and we'll let you know.
Okay. Can I add a couple more quickie? I know we don't have much time. Madam Chair, will you allow me to add two other quick things that were in that document?
Quick, quick.
One is that there, Article seven D, they were supposed to work cooperatively with the trustees of reservation concerning Mary Cummings Park, which was supposed to lead to possibly to a memorandum of understanding. And lacking a memorandum of understanding, there were supposed to be routine reports provided to the planning board about their cooperation of working between the trustees, which manage the Mary Cummings Park right now, and Northeastern. And I'm not aware of any, any reports like that that have, that have happened. So, I'd like to request that the planning board look into that situation also.
And what was the last item?
Last thing is in item seven F, there are several paragraphs referring to off-site traffic improvements. These deal with the improvement of the intersection located at Cambridge Street, Route Three, and South Bedford Street. And there has been some activity that we're aware of along those lines. For instance, somebody had put up some flags on Mary Cummings property, actually. We aren't sure what the flags meant, but it looked like there was some activity. And we know that this is supposed to involve the town of Burlington, the city of Wilburn, and the state DOT. And again, the trustees are supposed to be involved with this because this South Bedford Street runs right through part of Mary Cummings Park on both sides. And so, we, we're, we're be sure, we want to be sure that, for instance, there's a historical stone wall there, and we want to be sure that's, that's not destroyed or removed.
Sure. I'm assuming you are a trustee, correct?
Sorry?
Are you a trustee?
Yeah. Well, I'm a member, but not, not, I can't speak for the trustees.
We're the Friends of Mary Cummings Park.
We're the Friends, yes.
I mean, I don't want to duplicate efforts and make sure that we're in it, you know, I don't want to inundate folks with, with the same type of correspondence. Have you addressed this with them as well?
We've talked to Jeremy Dick, who's the land manager of Mary Cummings Park for the trustees. And I also told him that I'd be presenting this tonight. And he's aware of the, the only, of these three items I mentioned, the, the thing he's most aware of is the traffic concerns about Cambridge Street and South Bedford. So, he is aware of that, but I haven't had any communication with him recently.
Okay. Steph, do you have any comments on that?
So, yes. So, the traffic, the intersection improvements, that is happening. I mean, we facilitated it.
Okay.
However, and we worked with Northeastern to make sure that there was money to design that. However, it's really in Wilburn, so we have little jurisdiction over it. I know that Wilburn has putting it on the transportation improvement program, the TIP. And so, that will be taking place. It takes a long time to get your project.
Yes, I understand.
On the TIP, or off of the TIP. So, so it is on the TIP. They're actively working towards that. But I think, I think it is on the TIP right now. So, it's just a waiting game. But as we find out more, we'll let you know. But again, it's, Wilburn had to apply and do all, like, so, yes.
The trustees clearly had to be involved. So, that, not we Friends so much, but they definitely should be involved in that.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. No, thank you for, for coming and bringing this to our attention. We'll look into the matters.
Thank you.
Announcements?
Okay. So, Burlington's fiftieth annual tree lighting celebration will happen this Sunday, December fourth, at four P M. on the Town Common. Sculpture Park Committee is happening on December seventh at noon via WebEx. Zoning bylaw review committee is happening December fourteenth at six thirty. Again, go if we want to talk about the sign. Planning board meeting on December fifteenth. I think we've agreed that it's been canceled.
Correct.
Can we vote on that to make it official?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the planning board meeting of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Rappap, I need a second.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Larue.
Yes.
Gaffney. Cavino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Christmas holiday. The town hall will be closed on December twenty-sixth for the Christmas holiday and January second for the New Year's Day holiday. I also wanted to mention that the town of Burlington was mentioned. So, the Boston Globe did their top employers, top one hundred employers in the state, you know, best places to work in the state. And three companies in Burlington made the list. So, it was Progress, which is an enterprise software company, which was eleventh in the large firms category. Veracode is an app and software developer, which is over on Blue Sky Drive. And then EMD Group, EMD Millipore, they also ranked on that list. So, I think through the work of, you know, these companies are here. They're here because we, we have vital town with great amenities. And so, I think, you know, it's great that we have these companies here.
Thank you. Do any other members have announcements? Okay. Let's, moving on to matters of appointment. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point six point two point one, supermarket of the zoning bylaws, one twenty Cambridge Street, Foodland Supermarket, Inc., is the applicant. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes. I'm Mohamed Nourzaman. I have a grocery store with the, grocery shop in the one twenty Cambridge Street, Burlington, whose name is the Foodland. And I am running that store since two thousand ten, which is last twelve years. And in the same plaza, we just recently bought the new pla, new building, which is the Metro K-Union. And, and we want to move, like, my existing business to, from, like, exhibit from that place to the new places, the Metro K-Union, that building. That's why I applied for the special permit. And that's why I'm here.
Great. Steph. So, we have spoken to the applicant. We have some questions regarding, you know, shopping carts, parking lot management, and kind of dumpsters, this kind of things that we wanted to.
Sure.
To talk about. But I don't have any major concerns personally. Caleb did a traffic study, a traffic, a parking analysis, not a traffic study.
Not a traffic analysis.
He did not do a traffic study. A parking analysis of the site. And this, this use will work in the site if, when the, the parking will comply when Mr. Nourzaman closes his other location. So, it's kind of like a one-for-one. And so, but there, so, that's, that's all for now, Madam Chair.
We have a couple of departmental reports with conditions, anything, any cause for concern or anything that's ordinary?
Nope. All standard stuff. Board of Health, it's all, it's all standard stuff. There's nothing out of the ordinary that, that has been.
So, to Steph's point, what are you planning to name the new grocery store?
The same name, the Foodland Supermarket.
Okay.
Because all customer knows the same name, and is it the same plaza?
Okay.
So, it's going to be good for the customers. So, they need to, they don't need to go to other places, you know. So.
Sure.
So, they know, like, we are moving the same place.
Will shopping carts be available?
Yes. We will put in the, some, like, shopping cart. It's going to be the side of the, the building. We have space in front of the building, the side. So, we'll put in that, that places.
Caleb, do you have a rendering of the building to show where these, the shopping carts?
Is the, okay, the front entry, the side has the, like, the front entry, the side has, like, we have space, the both sides, left and right.
Not the.
Yeah.
Not the side where the, the traffic is to the right side?
No, not, not in the parking lot. It's in the side.
Inside?
No.
No, no, no.
It's, well, let's, let's, can we, can you, Caleb, can you pull up a street view of it?
Yeah, if it's a street view, it's going to be.
Yeah, we could do that. So.
That would be great. Thank you.
Give me one second.
Yeah. The other question I have.
And we can put in the inside also. We have a lot of, plenty of space inside. So, if it's not working in the side, the outside, so we can put in the inside also. We don't have any problem.
And you'll have an attendant to get those.
Yeah. So, when the customer goes inside, they can.
Never return the shopping carts?
They can go the inside and they can take the shopping cart and.
Okay. So, thinking about, she wants street view.
Yep. Through you, Madam Chair, I just want to confirm, this is, you know, you're expanding the site of a grocery store. What are the, I know there are some enclosed dumpster, dumpsters on the site. What is your plan for waste? And, and how, how does that work? I know this is a condo building and there's all sorts of different association rules. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. Actually, the dumpster, actually, right now, I'm sharing the dumpster with the condo association because I'm in the part of the condo, right, right now, whatever is the existing store. So, the same thing when I'm moving there. So, I'll pay the same amount of the, whatever is coming, the waste management, you know. So, whatever the, they're charging, I'll pay the same, same amount. So, I don't think there's going to be an issue.
And do you know how often that those dumpsters are?
I think they take three times a week, I think. Three times, every week, three to four times a week. They're, they're taking the, yeah.
So, I just have one question. So, they're going to be in front, the shopping carts?
It's the side, the, next to the door, the side, there is the space, is the plant over there. So, we'll make it the.
Oh, I see. So, like, I think, like, right here, correct?
Yeah, right there. So, the plant will, will make it the, the plant is straight, you know. So.
It'll be a corral.
Yeah. There's, there's enough space. We took the measurement. There's enough space, but.
Because it can get busy, that pocket lot, in and, in and out of there. Because I used to go to that metro.
Oh, okay.
And it can get very busy. So, as long as.
So, we can, otherwise, we can, we can put in the inside, no problem.
Okay.
So, we have a place inside, yeah.
We can, I'll add that to the.
Just going to say.
Add that to the permit?
Please.
Yeah.
Ernie, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
I have one quick question, more curiosity than anything else. How much, how much bigger will this be than your current operation?
The current one is the fifteen hundred square feet and.
Fifteen nine hundred?
Fifteen hundred only.
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred, yeah.
Okay. And this is?
And this is the, I think, the metro is, I think, forty-one plus.
So, almost, almost three times.
Yeah, almost three times, yeah.
Much bigger. Do any other members of the board have any questions, comments, or concerns? Any desire to make some of the landscaping in the front?
Bill's hand is up.
I'm sorry. Is there any desire to make any landscaping in the front a little bit more robust?
The landscaping, actually, the met, sorry, the, I think the condo, condo association, they have the landscaping guys. They're, they're always cleaning the property and other things. So, and I'm, we are sharing the, when I'm moving to metro, then we are sharing the parking space and other things. So, we are paying some amount for that. Actually, we are paying that amount to sharing space and other things. As soon as we move out, everything's included with that.
Okay. So, you don't have any design control over that, I guess?
No, not that.
Okay. Member Gaffney?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you still might. They're on the landscaping. I think the landscaping is beautiful on the left-hand side. And, and on the front, it's, I would hate to see the carriages out there and try to take up any of the landscaping that's currently there. Just going around and take a look. I think it said at the dumpsters, are there a couple of dumpsters right around the corner in the back? Is that where they are for this building?
There is the, two dumpsters. One is for the cardboard, one is for the trash.
Okay. Is, is there a way we can kind of, if you, if you look at the fencing there, looks a bit broken down. Is there any way to kind of, you know, rejuvenate that? It's always nice to have, you know, kind of, maybe white fencing that would match, you know, the fencing behind it?
Actually, they already did the, the parking lot and other things, I think, two months before, month, two months before, they put in the new fence and new, the dumpster, the new fence. It's very nice right now.
Okay.
The condo association did it, I think, two months before. The new parking lot and other things. Everything's new.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I just want to add that this image is from September of two thousand nineteen, so something could have easily changed.
Thank you. Thank you. There any other comments, questions, concerns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have? Speak. If you would please approach the microphone, identify yourselves.
My name is Peter Vino. I live at nine Birchcrest Butter to your facility. We've been there for, my wife and I have been there for about forty years. So, my concern, I think I might be speaking for some of the other, you know, other butters. A couple of these other folks here are a little closer than I am to your facility. But my concern is this, right here, the dumpsters and, and the use of the property. I'm concerned that there might be some floodgates opening about the use of your, the, not just your facility, but others for the purposes of food, fast food and that type of operation. There's two things I'm concerned about. Odor and rodents, okay, with food. There is a prevailing breeze that runs up Birchcrest Street. So, there's a lot of odor, whether it's coming from the dumpsters or something ejected from, in exhaust from a building, is going to end up in my yard, it's going to end up in their yard, and it's going to destroy our summer. Okay? So, what assurances do we have that that's not going to be a problem? Is there any additional changes to, to your operation? Do you have, I think I heard some, somebody made mention of a butcher shop?
Yeah, we have already the kind, the.
You already have a butcher shop?
We already have a butcher shop, yeah.
Okay. I'm concerned about the expansion of that butcher shop, you know, and, and the, the disposal of what comes out of the butcher shop.
So, what, it's only the, the regular, the regular meat fat? Or is this regular?
Mm-hmm.
Not other, not, not other things. Just, we just, we got the meat from the, from the sorbet house.
Mm-hmm.
And when the customer orders this, we cut the little pieces, whatever. If the customer wants a five pound goat meat and one chicken, so that just, we give just, it comes little fat, you know, when they cut the chicken.
Mm-hmm. But does the.
Skin, yeah.
But the unused portions, where does that go? Does that go into these dumpsters?
Same thing, the same dumpster.
Yeah.
But because we are just moving, like, same operation, just moving from point A to point B. So, same operation, same setup, everyone's same.
It's not an expansion or increase?
Not. The main station is going to be the same, same size. And my grocery part is going to expand because.
Mm-hmm.
We have, like, a lot of items the customer wants to buy, but we don't have any space to keep that one. That's why we're expanding the bigger space. So, it's good for the customers that they're getting the, whatever they want, they're getting the, everything from the one.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, it's in the butter. Our biggest concern is that if it should start to expand or it gets a little messy, you know, people aren't paying close attention to the dumpsters, just regular old dumpsters. I mean, I, I work in industrial, I've, I've run a business, we had a dumpster. It's a problem keeping things neat and organized, especially when you bring food into the situation.
Actually, the dumpster, they take, the, they takes the waste management, they're taking the frequent, the three times a week, every day. So, whatever is the, they're taking like, yeah, three times a weekend, three times or four times a week. They took the.
So, it's three times a week they're emptied only?
Yeah.
Dumpsters?
The every, every other day, they count and they do the empty, whatever is that. The boats, the cardboard and the trash, both, both dumpster.
The cardboard doesn't bother me. It's the food. The cardboard doesn't bother me, it's the food, food scraps.
Excuse me, before you speak, you have to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
I Rick Hyder, five Birchcrest, right, right behind the white fence, so in the winter, it's fine, right, because everything's frozen. But in the summer, we have smelled when it gets really hot, rotting meat, right, so it's being just disposed in the dumpster, not properly packaged, clearly. Or squirrels get in there, I have squirrels sometimes in the tree eating, eating a bagel, they throw it on the lawn, so. The dumpster's not sealed properly and there's, there's definitely been raw meats put in there.
Um. I'm sorry?
Have you talked to the Board of Health?
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's really a, a big question for, for me, and I'm sure you can jump in on that one as well, I mean, what repercussions do we have if we find things, uh, getting worse instead of better? If we have rodent problems that we haven't had in the past as a result of hovering around a dumpster full of scraps of meat?
I think that they, you, they can address the Board of Health.
The Board of Health would be the ones who would be the ones to a- address that, they, they, they have, um, jurisdiction over that. And they can, um, do citations or violations, we don't have authority over that specific type of, um, issue.
Can they dictate what types of dumpsters are used?
I don't, I can't speak to that, but if, but they would be the ones that you would speak to about, about that, we have a really, really good Board of Health.
Yeah, cause with, with meat, with meat products, it's just using that one as an example, any, any food that's maybe cooked on the site and dumped in that dumpster, you can dump some, you can, you can empty them three times a week. And you're still gonna have a pretty gnarly dumpster.
And can I speak on that quickly, I'm in between them, I'm Elizabeth.
Excuse me, and, and you shouldn't, just say your name first.
Oh, Elizabeth, I'm Elizabeth Williams, I'm at seven Birchcrest, and yes, before I have called, is that Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Clancy is the, is the building it's stuck?
Oh, because of the fence, the issues with the fencing, um, and in fact, I, I will have to dip, give a call out again because we've lost our screen, uh. That beautiful white fence goes just so far and doesn't, doesn't go behind our house at all.
Okay.
So I will address that, but there has been too, not only, um, there's been flies in the summer, like.
Tons.
Tons of flies in the last few years. Honestly, we've all talked about it, but really, we didn't wanna like just call and call and call and call, and, um, and I, I think what we're looking for is some kind of like more than. And you would say it too, they empty the dumpsters at what time?
Oh, any time, if literally, three, four, five in the morning, always early, yeah.
Four, four, bang, the big dumpsters.
Cause they have to get in there, right, if there's cars there, they can't get the, so we understand.
And there's also dumpsters, and this isn't yours, it's behind, you know, behind the strip, like when you look at the overview, those are not the only dumpsters on that site, there are also other dumpsters that constantly will bang regardless of time. And, and even leaf blowing or something behind the buildings, all through the buildings at like nine o'clock at night.
I, I think what we're, I think what we're looking, asking for here, the ask is, that, you know, we know this is probably gonna move forward, right, they have a right to operate, they're already operating the business. I guess what we're asking for is, uh, you know, a doubling of the effort to keep, you know, raw meat scraps sealed in plastic tightened up, the lids closed on the dumpsters. The doors shut, right, that, that kind of effort to keep the squirrels out, that sort of thing, to keep it from, and, you know, during the summer, once those bags rip, the dumpsters get really rank smelling. Maybe they need to be bleached at some point, right? It's really during the dead of the summer that, that odor really carries, I mean, it's, 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 right, you've smelt it, right?
Yeah.
It was right up the hill, there is a prevailing wind, right?
Like when my children, we had a graduation party years ago, wasn't a problem, now I would be embarrassed because I wouldn't know, you know, what type of smell or, or what type of odor or, or even, you know, so. I think that's what we're talking about, and not necessarily like you have a right, it's, that's fine, but like some sort of stipulation that also, like a pest control service. I mean, I don't think that's a lot to ask, if you're serving, if you're dealing with raw meats and food, to have a pest control, like that has to come in and monitor it. I, I don't know, it's not like my business, but I'm sure companies have, like every so often.
Usually markets have those big boxes.
Yeah, like, just, just like, you know, I, I, I know when, um, my sister lives in Belmont, they had a problem with rats and they had, um. Devices put all around parameters of places to ensure that none of those, you know, happen, so. So something like that, you know, just looking out for what could, what could be coming, considering what has happened in the past.
Understood, well, thank you, well, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you, just, thank you and good luck.
Do one quick.
Uh, yeah, and.
Just, uh, one, uh, sir. Your, your best friend on something like that is, is the Board of Health, we have an extremely good Board of Health.
We understand, I mean, I know that, right?
And, and also sometimes the business owner might not be aware of some of the things going on, so they might drop him a line.
Sure. Yeah, I have gone over there many times in several lives, right, for several things, right?
Thanks, thank you.
I mean, I've worked with them in the past to get the correct fence and that.
Great, good.
Even paid for half of it, at, at the point when it, when I wanted it higher, when the wooden fence was there, so I've been working with them for years.
So you already have a good relationship with them.
Okay, but I think that this is the point that, at this point, we just make it known, so you understand, and then maybe you guys can double your efforts, I'm not controlling that sort of thing.
Understood, thank you very much, sir, um, thank you, member Gaffney? Member Larue?
I guess, is going to the Board of Health, do we have any comments from the department?
Yeah.
Yes, um, we do, and I can, I can read those, so this has gone over to the Board, um, to the Board of Health, so, um, Marlene Johnson, who is our health agent, um, we have conditions in the permit. Um, um, the process, the proposed food establishment must undergo a plan review, um, and a plan review application shall be submitted to the Board of Health prior to, um, construction. And they just wanna confirm that a new, um, external grease or internal grease interceptor shall be installed, um, regarding for the, um, state plumbing code, so, um. It's going, these, these things will go through the Board of Health and that needs to, um, happen before, um, a certificate of occupancy, um, is provided.
Um, to that, um, regarding that, we've had language before, I think, from the Board of Health regarding order control, have we not?
Um, so we do put, there's a standard condition in all, um, food establishments, so fast order food or restaurants, that they must have, um, proper odor control, and it's, it's, you know, very specific that it can't. Go into neighborhoods, so for fast, for food establishments, cooking facilities, that, um, would be the case, um, there was, we recently permitted Bombay Chat at, um, at, in this plaza, and they are required to have, um. Specific, um, order control units put on that, um, put on their building as well.
Is there any reason why those same requirements could not be put on this business?
Um, they could, but as far as I am aware, there is no food preparation happening, it's, it was simply selling, um, food and meat.
So the odor problem is actually probably coming from the dumpsters, so, um. Perhaps we can just consult with the Board of Health and, and ask for their input so that they could help us, and, and maybe we could even put that in our motion tonight, that we could approve this. With the condition that the Board of Health will add additional conditions to address both rodent control and odor control.
Um, I think also, thank you, member Larue, also, um, one of the folks had mentioned something about, uh, the fencing, we just wanna make sure that there's appropriate fencing separating, um, that property.
Okay.
And that should be, you know, what, like, kind, like, quality of, of fencing that is there at the expense of, uh, the property owner, anything that would be in addition would be, be a butters.
Yep.
Um.
I have a clarifying question.
Please.
Did you say that you share the dumpster or the dumpster's entirely yours?
Uh, the dumpster for the everyone, so what, right now, I'm sharing with, uh, with the, yeah, everyone.
It's a little bit harder to control.
Yeah, that does make it harder, um, uh, you know, I think that we should probably reach out to, who is the, who's the condo association, do we have condo association?
Um, I don't have the, I can.
Is there an owners' association or?
I.
Who's responsible for the maintenance?
Uh, the condo association, they are maintaining the dumpster.
Well, do you know who the trustees are of the condo association?
Trustees. Uh, there is a three, four.
Yeah. You don't know, all right, so I think that we need to find who that is, because if it's a shared dumpster, we can't put the burden completely on him, it could be another, it could be another, um, owner. And I think that that also should be built into the decision. Yep.
Member Gaffney raised his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, member Gaffney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think I heard that he's, he's currently sharing a dumpster, uh, maybe the question would be, when you're in the, the, uh, separate building, will you be sharing a dumpster?
Uh, yes.
You will still be sharing a dumpster, okay.
We're still sharing with the dumpster.
Same dumpster, I think, member Gaffney.
There, there look like there were two of them there, right, on the, uh, on the view?
But it's the same dumpster, one is cardboard, one is.
My trash.
Ash.
Okay, thank you.
He's already currently using it.
Okay, um, is there anyone else in the audience that has any questions, comments, or concerns, sir, would you please?
Hello, um, my name is Jay Daria, uh, I'm, uh, I own two units in the, um, in the plaza, uh, the Hillside Colony Plaza. Um, uh, there are a couple of things I'm not opposed to him, uh, to, uh, him starting a business, uh, in a new business over there, but, uh, there are some assumptions being made that need to be written down. Um, for example, um, a, the units that you see in the L shape over there, right, those are part of the, uh, condominium. That's, that's the plaza, the unit that you see, uh, in the corner, which is buying, which is bought and opening, uh, the business over there, is not part of the plaza. Um, the assumption being made that, uh, he would have shared, uh, usage of the dumpsters is actually wrong, there's nothing written, there is no been, there's not been any chats between, uh, between him for the new property. And, um, the usage of the dumpster between the condominium association of the plaza.
Okay, that's interesting, cause that, that kinda changes things completely, so. Are you gonna still use those dumpsters, are you still owning this, the, the condos that are, are you gonna keep?
No, see, that's the thing, right, he currently leases two units in that plaza.
Mm-hmm.
So while his units are being leased, um, and maybe he moves the business over there, is, you know, that's all right, because he's entitled to use the, um, uh, dumpsters based on the, the plaza's occupancy, because he, he's, his lease is current. But two years down the road, or three years down the road, when the lease ends, um, what then, there's nothing written down on paper, um, about what it would be.
Okay, so you would have to get your own additional dumpsters, basically, what, he would, he would need to get an additional dumpster and, and maintain this.
Or make a, make some arrangement with the plaza.
Okay, so in the decision, it needs to say something along the lines of regardless of how his ownership is maintained or how his tenancy is held, that, um, he needs to maintain appropriate disposal.
Right, this is for, this is for the future, right, like, a- after his lease expires.
I, I understand, it, um, disposal, um, with perishables, uh, odor control, um, and pest control, pest vermin. And I think that that probably should cover it, uh, in addition, same thing with the fencing, I think that there needs to be something along the lines of, of the fencing being maintained, because I don't know exactly who owns that fence, right? Um, and if it's, whether it's the condo association or it's the, the con, um, the condo owners or metro itself, so. Who manages, who will be managing that building, the metro, the, what is formerly known as MetroCardi Union, will that be you yourself? So you're buying the entire building?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, let's make sure that that's very well.
Yeah, so that, I should still be. So my, uh, I think it's okay. If I put in the, like, separate dumpster for myself, right, for the, that, that building, so that's not gonna be, that's gonna be, create a more problem with the neighbors, because. If we share the dumpster with them, it's better to, you know, it's maintaining.
And that people who have you to get in touch with that condo association and figure out whatever you guys need to, but at the end of the day, I don't care if it's your dumpster or his dumpster, or whose dumpster is, it needs to be taken care of.
Taken care of, yeah.
This should have been appropriately presented to us, this is a little bit confusing and I think it's, it's.
Because when you throw the meat and other, other stuff, we always, uh, tie, we have a thicker, thicker garbage bag when you put in the meat, and we tighten the, tighten the bag properly, and then we throw the meat in the, or dumpster, you know, so all the time.
Liz, do you feel comfortable writing this decision this evening, or would you like to continue this until the next meeting? Uh, I, I, I feel like we may wanna clarify ownership and such.
I'm still kind of confused about.
I think we need to clarify ownership here, um.
I can, um, I, I do have another point to make.
If you give me one second, please, uh, member Larue, did you have something?
I just wanted to let staff.
Know that member in Pemba is online and cannot unmute himself, he wanted to speak.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. He's on, member in Pemba is unmuted.
I just sent him a request.
Okay.
There you go.
With us?
I, I think I am, can you hear me?
You can.
All right, well, I've been trying to talk. First time anyone's been able to shut me up. I was, actually wanted to add that, I, I, it was my understanding that that building wasn't part of the association, but then somebody had clarified that, uh, and, and made that point already, so. Um, that's gonna, that does change things substantially, I think.
Agreed, agreed, um, so member in Pemba, I, I think that we should continue this and, and try to figure out ownership and how that thing, how this all kinda works out. Um, so we can clarify where we stand, uh, did you have something else, sir?
Um, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I agree with the, um, Madam Chair, that's, I think we need to continue, but I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Um, I also wanted to bring up, um, the parking lot usage, uh, now my businesses are not a grocery store, um, but they do, um, you know. You know, for customers to come in, then you do need to have empty parking spots, um, so there is a, um, some sort of easement, uh, document, uh, written, uh, between, uh, the usage of the parking lot from Lot A and the rest of the plaza. So it was done in like nineteen seventy-five or something, um, but it was done for MetroCardi Union, uh, not for a grocery store, okay, seventy-five and this is two thousand twenty-two.
Again, there, there's some serious ownership issues that we need to work out.
Yeah, yeah.
So, staff, if you could look into that easement and see if it dissolves with the business or how that works?
Um, I'd ask the applicant to provide me with that.
Okay, so I think, uh, if you could look into that, do you have, or do you have that capability, or, you know, maybe you should consult an attorney?
Parking lot, the, the Lot A, that's the MetroCardi Union, so there's in, there is already, I have the twelve parking with, uh, uh, one handicap access, the handicap, so total, twelve parking is there, so. So we, I'm paying the, every month for the, like, the met, the metro pay the, every month for the uses of the parking and other things.
Right.
Every month, the.
I don't know that.
An amount, yeah.
Twelve spaces with a handicap parking space is sufficient for a grocery store, is that, staff?
So they're under, would be underparked by, um, two spaces?
Okay, um, sir, if you would like to approach.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Catra, and, uh, I own the two properties there, I own the one of the grocery stores, and I did gather one of the special from it for the future for one of the takeout restaurant. So the, I'm coming back with the first question, the dumpster, if they're gonna get there on, where they're gonna put it?
Again, we need to figure out ownership, so we're, we will address that.
That's why I asked them for, if I do the, say, use the same dumpster, whatever I am using right now, that is gonna be great, so.
What you're using right now is not going to be, you know, you're not gonna have ownership or any rights to that dumpster at the end of your lease, so like I said, I think we need to continue this, figure out who the ownership is and what, what you're gonna be doing with that owners' association to determine what rights you will have post-lease.
Yeah.
But at this time, there's nothing more that we can do, and I think that, um, you know, I, I think that we should continue this to the next meeting.
Second question, the landscaping, their building is maintained by their own, there's, association is not involved on that.
Again, we're, we'll address all of these things once we figure out ownership, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter, or no, we don't wanna close?
No, we don't wanna close it.
Oh, sorry, I wanna continue, sorry, I, I'd like to make a motion to continue the matter for the meeting of January fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Um.
Discussion, for a second, um, I just wanna make sure that staff is going to get everything.
Um, so, may, and maybe we wanna push it to the second meeting in January?
Not necessarily at the time, but are you, lines of communication are open?
Yes, I will make sure, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's, I, I mean, I need documentation from the, I need to have proof and documentation from the condo association. I need to have proof and documentation from the condo association regarding who owns what, parking agreements, dumpster, all of that is all things that I would want to see before they come back.
I think that we need to have, uh, a discussion to the second meeting in January because I think we're gonna need more time than that. Um, I, I will say that there is, um, pretty hard to taste in my mouth that we're even having this conversation and that this wasn't presented appropriately and we wasted a lot of time. Um, so, uh, that being said, please continue with that motion.
For a second.
Uh, do you want to update the date?
Uh, please.
So that, that meeting, the second meeting, January, be the nineteenth?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So this, this is gonna be the January second? January second, please say.
The second meeting.
Um, Rappaport?
Yes.
The D board.
But we can.
Yes.
Um, Gaffney?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Please get your affairs in order before you present the next question.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point twenty point one. Massage therapy of the zoning bylaws, thirty-six Wind Street Fresh Blossom Spa Incorporated is the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, of course. You owe me.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, Thomas Murphy here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, with me at the table is Sunny Shen Mattis, who is the applicant. Uh, and also with me is her husband Lou. Um, Sunny's English is somewhat limited, so Lou's gonna help us with that to the degree necessary.
I, isn't that, uh, how does that work? Is that to the applicants or?
It's, every, it's fine. It's, it's okay. We, translation services are acceptable.
Yep, okay. All right, that's great. No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the, the application before you is for a special permit, properties at thirty-six Wind Street in Burlington. Um, and the applicant is proposing, uh, she's a licensed, um, massage therapist. And so she is proposing to open up her own practice at that spot. Um, currently, it's an older building. I think it was built around nineteen seventy. There were, um, two units in the building, two commercial units. Uh, one is a hair salon. The other one that the, that she'll be moving into hopefully is the, uh, formerly was a tax preparer or accountant of some sort. Um, but that's been vacant for a little bit. Um, as you're looking at, on the picture here, the one all the way over to the right, it would be the, um, the space that she'd be going into. Um, by way of background, Sunny's been a massage therapist for over twelve, thirteen years, somewhere in that ballpark. So she's, uh, well experienced. She's fully licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, the space itself, um, she doesn't intend to really do any internal, um, uh, work in there. It's, it's divided up into a couple of separate, uh, rooms currently. Uh, there's a bathroom and some sort of a, a break room towards the back. And then a larger waiting area, kind of in the front there. Um, so there's not gonna be any, other than maybe some cosmetic stuff, but nothing from a structural standpoint in terms of, uh, uh, having to do work on the, on the premises. Um, her plan is to be open, um, Monday through Sunday from nine thirty AM till nine PM. She'll close earlier on Sundays. Uh, she's, um, for the time being and, and, uh, for the near future anyway, she's gonna be the only employee of this business. So she's obviously a hard worker. Um, she's, um, she's looking forward to the opportunity to, to, to run her own business. Um, so like I said, we do need the special permit. We've, there was an old, um, site plan, if you will, on file over at Town Hall that they finally found. Um, we've done a parking calculation, uh, the sufficient parking on the site. Um, it's, I think that the site plan dates back till around the nineteen eighties sometime, so it's not the, the most recent site plan. But like I said, it's an older building. The landlord, uh, is a Burlington resident. As is Sunny and her husband, they're both, um, Burlington residents. Um, uh, in, uh, he's in Florida right now, actually. So, uh, it's a small building. It's clearly not a, um, you know, it's not first-class office space by any stretch of the imagination. It's a legitimate, um, it's, it, it's a legitimate site for business. Uh, it's been there for a long time. Um, it's perfect for small business owners and that's what we have here. And, uh, she's just looking for the opportunity to be able to, to, to start her business and, and make a go of it. So, uh, that's kind of in a nutshell what the, um, application is about, what her plans are. Uh, and she's happy, um, to address any concerns or questions the board might have.
Great, thank you. Uh, you mentioned the owner is also from Burlington, but you said he's in Florida. Is he present online or he or she?
Uh, it's a he. I spoke to him this afternoon, actually, on the phone. Um, and I gave him the, he wasn't, I didn't have full confidence in his technological abilities, let me put it that way. Um, but, um, so he may be, um.
Do you know what his name is?
Yeah, it's, um.
Just so I can see it there.
I, actually, I didn't see his name there. Um, it's Joe Santoro.
Joseph Santoro.
Joe Santoro. Um, I think if he was.
I didn't see any of it.
I think if he's successful at all in joining us, it was probably gonna be through a BCAT online. So he might be able to be observing, but maybe not participating.
Um, I, I don't, uh, staff, do you have any questions, comments?
Um, so this is kind of, um, so from what I understood, so again, the beginning of this, this was really hard to find a site plan. It hasn't changed in a long time. Um, steady businesses, it's like, you know, great for, um, neighbor, neighborhood businesses. Um, we're not really concerned about the parking. Um, I believe that the property owner also owns both buildings, this side and the one on the right as well. Is that correct, Attorney Murphy?
Correct. There, uh, there, there, he, there are two separate realty trusts. He's the, he's the trustee of both trusts, so. Um, they're two separate legal entities, but he's the principal of both of them.
Um, I don't have any, um, concerns. I just wanted to know, you know, if expansion or, um, they were looking to hire more, um, people to work in there to make sure that there was enough parking for clients and, um, and, and therapists, but I, I think that it will be.
Yeah, she's gonna be a self-employed, single practitioner for, that's the plan.
Um, and through you, Madam Chair, also, um, did you supply us with a copy of the, um, of her massage therapy license with the state? I don't see it on, you might have emailed it. I just wanted to make.
Yeah, I actually, she just renewed it. It expired and so she, this is her new, she brought me a copy.
Oh, fabulous. Um, if you, we couldn't, if you don't mind, can you upload that into Viewpoint?
Sure.
Attorney Murphy, that would be, that would be excellent. Okay. Uh, that is all I have for now. Madam Chair, thank you.
Um, I don't have any, uh, any comments, concerns. Uh, does any of the other board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
I don't. No.
They actually own the building? All right. Um.
That was good. That was.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the, the audience that has any questions, comments, or concerns? May I have a motion, please?
Uh. Motion to close the public hearing?
Um, Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Um, Lerue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Gaffney?
He usually gives a thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Um, Impemba?
Joe?
Um, Natola?
Yes.
Cavino? Um, so that is, um, six zero in favor of closing the public hearing. We need one more motion.
Uh, motion to approve the request of Sunny Shen Mattos for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point twenty point one. Massage therapy of the Burlington zoning bylaw to permit the operation of a business office in massage therapy practice within a seven eighty plus or minus square foot tenant space within the general business zoning district located at thirty-six Wind Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
Um, Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Lerue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes.
Good luck with your business.
Good luck.
Thank you. May I have a vote? Have a good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Want a new motion to continue?
No, 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 no.
Oh, well, that's all.
Motion to continue items, no, you should take items eight C and eight E through.
Eight J together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Thank you.
Second.
Um, Rappaport?
Yes.
Lerue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland? Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point two point six point nine. Fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine to sixty-three middle six turnpike. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point three point two point fifteen. Storage and disposal of oils and fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine to sixty-three middle six turnpike. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point four point one point eleven. Discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine to sixty-three middle six turnpike. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six, six point one point one. Non-conforming uses of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine through sixty-three middle six turnpike. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six point one point two. Non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine through sixty-three middle six turnpike. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to eight point three point five point four. B, storage of liquid petroleum products of the zoning bylaw provisions fifty-nine through sixty-three. Middle six turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan fifty-nine through sixty-three. Middle six turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Uh, Thomas Murphy here for the applicant. With me is Mike Durant of Noria. Uh, next to him is John Sully, who's the, um, the project architect. Also online, um, from Baller Engineering is Andy Blank. Blake and, uh, Ron Muller is here on behalf of the, uh, traffic engineer, also online.
Good evening.
Hi.
As the board, I'm sure remembers, we were here at the last meeting. Um, since then, uh, we've provided staff with, uh, several pieces of information that were requested last time. I think we sent over, uh, somebody had asked for a, a nighttime, uh, rendering as to what the exterior would look like. Um, the CONCOM had requested some up, updated, um, water runoff and treatment numbers, which have been supplied to CONCOM. And I think, um, staff got a copy of those as well.
Did we get comments back on this?
Um, sorry.
Did we get any comments back on what they had supplied to CONCOM?
Conservation, yes. So we did get comments from, um, John Keel, conservation administrator. Um, they did, um, they asked for, um, increased onsite infiltration of stormwater. So originally, they had only, um, proposed infiltrating the rooftop runoff. And the, um, conservation, um, asked them to include the parking lot, which they have done. And so, um, the conservation, um, administrator said that they should be all set to, um, move forward. Um, conservation is not meeting until next week. Um, and so, um, we would not file this permit officially until that vote has occurred and, um, no changes have been made. But they do not anticipate making any additional changes, requests of the site, because they've done everything the best. So.
Sorry, Attorney Murphy, please continue.
Uh, just a few more things, Madam Chair. Um, we were asked to get confirmation from the engineer that, um, they had incorporated the twelve interior seats near the food area into the parking calculations. And they had, had in fact done that and they sent an email to that effect, which I forwarded to staff. Um, I also forwarded some updated, um, traffic numbers. Um, the, the traffic engineer has gone back out to the site uh, recently. Um, they had made certain projections back a couple of years ago when this first project first started coming together. And essentially, the gist of it is that the traffic is certainly a lot later now than what they had anticipated back when they made their first, um, uh, study, uh, year and a half, two years ago. Um, and there was also, uh, the, uh, the police department safety officer had made a request that the, um, egress and, and access to the, um, the site should be accessed only from the southerly, um, curb cut and egress only from the northerly curb cut. Um, the traffic engineer, in their report, had it somewhat different. They had, uh, traffic coming in and out from both ways. Um, she supplied, me and I forwarded to the staff just a letter explaining their rationale and their thinking behind it. I think at the end of the day, if, if, if it's the planning board and the safety officers will to do it one in, one out, we can live with that. But we just wondered on the record that there were some counterarguments in reasons why they had designed it otherwise. Uh, so however, the board and the, and safety department, uh, safety officer chooses to, to adopt those, um, what we gave them versus what, what they prefer, uh, we can live with either one of them. Um, I think that's pretty much everything that I've supplied to staff between last time and this time. Um, and, uh, you know, we're happy to address any additional questions or concerns the board might have.
Right, thank you, staff. Do you have any questions?
Um, my only kind of question, um, so I, I am aware that the parking calculations for the fast ordered food restaurant do, um, there is enough parking for the interior seats. What I am unsure of is, um, exterior seats. Generally, when, um, the planning board, um, permits food establishments, interior and exterior seats um, are counted together as part of the traffic, as part of the, um, parking count for seating. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that was on the, the record. Um, the other, um, the other thing is that I did, um, forward the copy of the response that, um, the traffic engineer has provided to, um, the traffic safety officer. Um, and I have not received anything back. But again, um, Attorney Murphy has said that, um, you know, if the police does want one in, one out, I think that that's, you know, doable. Um, I think that is, for now, I think that is all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with the board. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns that they would like to address? Uh, member Lerue? Oh, and also for the record, um, I did watch the last meeting and signed the melon form, so just to let you know. Uh, member Lerue?
That's what you was gonna say. I wanted to hear from the rest of the board, but I wanted to make it clear that I watched the meeting and signed the melon form so that I can participate in this conversation and the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, member Gaffney?
Thank you. Uh, I was there last meeting and I.
Mentioned about, instead of having the bollards out front, again, and I, I do appreciate the, the applicant coming in with a, a much different uh, plan than last time. And they are heavily landscaping it, but we, they're still not landscaping out in the front. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, an opportunity to put, uh, planters there and have plants there instead of the bollards. As well as, uh, on the side, you can see in this picture where the outdoor seating is, that the, uh, that there's a fence there where you can then have additional planters for, uh, for, instead of bollards or that, or that brick wall there. So again, to, to really over-landscape this, uh, than, than under-landscape it. But again, thanks for the, all the other landscaping that you've done around. And the other note was just that, uh, if people look very closely at the site plan, there's, uh, proposed propane, uh, racks to be out there. And, um, I don't know, you know, we, I know we talked about that at the other, uh, gas stations before about if there's additional special permits, that they have to have that, what the other boards', uh, thoughts are on that.
Um, I'm sure, I believe that they would need, um, outdoor, uh, permit for outdoor storage of materials, outdoor storage. Um, so, um, if they do want something like a blue rhino or one of those, um, types of, um, propane containers that people, um, use, they would need to come back to us for a special permit to allow that.
Okay, so probably have to remove it off the plan. And then just, uh, you know, talking about if there's gonna be any point-of-sale, uh, material that'd be out on the sidewalk, uh, that, uh, I think we are, we are, uh, uh, that, uh, I think we are, we are, uh, frowning upon that. And then if they're going to be umbrellas out in the seating area, that they not be, uh, marked with any sort of advertising. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I agree with all of, uh, Member Gaffney's comments. So, let's, uh, make sure that those decisions, uh, those comments are in the decision. Um, if the seat count doesn't align with parking and that's not approved, then they're gonna come back to us and we'll landscaping? Or what does that look like?
Um, so if, so that's what we're here for. That's what we need to discuss tonight is, you know, um, if that outdoor area is seating for the restaurant, how that is handled? Um, or if it's seating at all for the restaurant and something else. So that's something that you guys should talk, um, that, that we should hash that out before a vote. I think that'd be.
I think so.
For me.
I mean, uh, personally, I think, um, I'd rather see some type of pergola or so, pergola or some type of landscaping kind of covering that or maybe so it's not so invasive from the, like, with the street. Um, I'm just concerned that they, you're gonna have, you know, kids just kind of congregating out there.
Uh, we, we talked about the, um, the outside patio there, area.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's not a heck of a lot of space there. Um, and it's.
Would you be more open just to doing landscaping rather than having the seating?
Uh, Mike Durant with Noria Energy. Uh, yeah, we could increase the landscaping over at the patio area, the outside seating area in lieu of, uh, pergola or some sort of structure. It's, it is Attorney Murphy has mentioned, it's very narrow over there. Um, but we could reduce some of that, that outside seating.
Or just remove that.
Yeah.
Some landscaping over there.
Do you have seating in, inside, right?
It's, uh, it, I know we're, we're, we're calling it restaurant seating or whatever, but it's, it's not. I mean, it's a, it's, it's, it's a convenient route where somebody, if they're out traveling and they stop to get some gas, they might get a soda or something or drink a water just to take a break or maybe even get a sandwich. But it's, I don't, I don't personally look at it as a restaurant. It's not where we're gonna gather the family and go down there for dinner or something of that nature.
I heard a motto is just kind of a big thing though, no?
So I, I, I guess the point is, is that, you know, as Michael said, they're okay with, with minimizing it. It was just more of an amenity. Sometimes people are driving the highway, they jump off, they needed some gas.
Sure.
They just wanna take a break and then sit outside and get a little fresh air or something.
Yeah. I, I, I'd rather see some benches landscaping than, than tables. Member LaRue, I'm sorry, uh, Vice Chair LaRue.
Yes, um, I agree. I think I'd like to see an abundance of landscaping there. I, I think it's unlikely that people are gonna really sit there, especially for fresh air because there's gonna be cars idling right next to them at that light. And, um, they, they aren't, the, the air will not be fresh. Um, so I would prefer to see an abundance of landscaping. I'm not sure that they need the seating at all. Um, the other comment that I wanted to make is I think that you've done a really good job. This looks a lot better than what you came to us with before. And I, I know some of the reasons behind that, but I, I wanted to compliment you on, on responding to a lot of our concerns. Um, I'm still struggling with my main concern, which is that because this is a nonconforming use, it is our goal always with long, nonconforming uses to eliminate them over time. And in this case, we're actually increasing them. And so we're going from, I know you said from four to six, but in my mind, it's from eight to twelve because that's how many cars could be pumping gas at the same time. And, and so I struggle with that. So my main question is, because if, if your answer to my question is yes, and then I have no more problems and I would be able to vote yes, um, without the qualms at all, is there any way that you would be able to go back to eight pumps instead of twelve?
Um, I'll defer to Michael, but I believe the answer is no.
It, it would not work for us, uh, at least from a business standpoint.
I understand. I had to ask the question and, and, um, I will factor that into my decision. I'm, I'm quite torn, to be honest with you, because this does look significantly better. Um, but I still am, I, I agonize over increasing the nonconforming use. But I do appreciate your efforts and thank you for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments, or concerns? My only comment.
Uh, yes, I.
Uh, Member Sutherland.
Uh, my only comment and close out the topic of the outdoor seating is, it's because the, I mean, the traffic study indicated that most of the traffic would be people going by, not necessarily someone coming off the highway. So I do think, I do feel like the use of the outdoor seating may not be as beneficial as landscaping, which might help counteract some of those lovely fumes that, um, Vice Chair LaRue was referencing. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Uh, Member Impemba.
Yep, I just, uh, also want to state that I watched the meeting and signed the melon forms. Um, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm in disagreement with some of the members and, which isn't always the case on this. But I, I kinda like the outdoor seating. Uh, I think I would like to see some trees in there as well. But I, you know, I think it's a, it's kind of a traffic calming thing. I, I kinda feel like it, it gives it a little quaint feeling down there. And that's, it's kind of a, a feeling that we, God knows we need down there, so. I think, um, I, I do like the, I would like the idea. I think I'd like to see some more trees and some, you know, some dimension to the landscape instead of just shrubs. I wanna see some height and some, you know, some, some tree greenery. But I would be in favor of the, um, maybe reduce some of the seating and put some trees in there. But, you know, it, leaving some of the tables and leaving some of the umbrellas and things like that that kind of give you the, you know, almost a little downtown feeling to it, so my thoughts, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Member Gaffney.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the only comment I had is just, is, is a member of Impemba speaking. Uh, you know, a while ago, we had talked about tree wells, right? Because we always hear that it's impossible to put trees in, in the places because it's heavily, you know, paved over and you just, you just can't get there. But there's a, there's a technique called tree wells, but I think we were gonna have someone speak to us about when the appropriate places for that and when do we do it and what's the technology behind it. So maybe the applicant, uh, can explore that in parallel. Um, to find out if there's an opportunity for tree wells here to put in trees where normally, uh, it would, it wouldn't be necessarily feasible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Um, I, I think we're, for the most part, we're pretty aligned with kind of the decision and where we're going. Um, is anyone opposed to, um, have any applicant come back to staff, uh, Vice Chair, uh, LaRue and myself to review kind of landscaping and such? Um, if we were in favor of moving forward with this decision, obviously with, you know, s- certain stipulations.
So, um, I, um, don't have a problem with that. I just need to know, you guys need to work out amongst yourselves will be helpful. Are we going with seats, a bench, or landscaping, or a combination? So, fair.
We're pointing that decision to the chair and vice chair.
I, I mean, I, I. Vice, Vice Chair LaRue, do you have any?
I do not have strong feelings. I would like to definitely see more landscaping, but I am not, I don't have strong feelings that I want all the tables eliminated or anything like that. I just wanna see more landscaping.
Yeah, I don't have any strong, strong feelings about eliminating all the tables. I mean, do I think they're gonna be used?
No.
Probably not. I mean, uh, Member Impemba might be going there, yeah, having dining on a, a night evening outside, but.
Yes, one, one table aside for Joe.
Yes, right, exactly.
Uh, I'm, I'm speaking briefly with my client. He's, they're, they're willing to, you know, ma- make a concession on that. I think it might be something that could be worked out offline.
Yeah.
You know, they would like, still like to have some of it as, as tables in the, like Joe says, it does make it with the umbrellas and whatnot. But certainly we can put, turn some of it into green space in one form or another. You know, there's not a lot of space there, so we're not gonna be any sprawling oak trees or anything, but we can dress it up a bit. But I'm confident that, you know, when working with staff, we can kind of work out some details on that.
Sure. Would you be willing to look at tree wells? Um, or member, yep.
So, tree wells are usually used in areas where, um, infiltration isn't possible.
Okay.
So, um, I think that, um, I can confer with the, um, Conservation Commission, but I think that, um, they're okay with, um, the infiltration on the site.
Okay.
Um, but tree wells are really cool.
Got it, that's noted.
Noted?
Noted. Um, so on the decision, can we ensure that the propane tanks are removed from the site plan? The propane tanks?
Yes.
On the site plan? Those need to be modified, uh, per Gaffney's request. Um, in addition to, should there be seating, no branded umbrellas?
Yep.
Or advertising of such on said proposed potential patio? Uh, is there anything else that we want to address at this point in time?
I, I just wanna put on back and I'm not opposed to the seating if they made it smaller or if it was, so if you decided in barter or file.
Okay, so this is a, a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to address at this point in time?
I do not see anyone, no.
All right.
I have one more comment. Um, so I spoke with, um, Attorney Murphy. So Attorney Murphy and his client, they, um, they applied, um, for, um, item eight D, which is approval for a special permit pursuant to four point two point five point one, which is retail gasoline oil lubrication stations. Um, because this is a preexisting nonconforming use, that is going to be taken care of via the section six finding. We cannot grant this special permit to them.
Good point.
Um, and so, um, I have a motion in here to withdraw it, um, without prejudice.
So, we could do that, uh, would we do that after we approved because we only took those items? Or do, you need us to withdraw that? The first?
We can do it after or before. I just wanted to put it on the record that that's why it's there.
Understood.
Understand why, why I'm doing that.
Okay, and then, um, I'm sorry, one more final thing, um, as far as the stipulation for the decision is, um, ingress and egress should align with what our safety officers are recommending.
Uh, yeah, so we're gonna, so we're gonna go with what, um, officer or Sergeant McDonough has requested. Okay, great.
Can I just weigh in on that one, maybe?
Sure.
If, if, I, it sounds like we haven't heard back from him since we sent the, submitted the letter and, you know, that was only a couple of days ago.
Sure.
Can I just?
His final decision.
Right, in the event that what changes his mind, then we're happy to, to do that.
You name a table after him.
Well, well, I have so many tables.
Just two, one from Member Impemba and one, one from Sergeant.
There's, there's nothing to say that if, if traffic stops to back up and it appears it's because of the only one in and one out that they can't come back.
Of course, of course, of course. Um, may I have a motion at least to, uh, close the public hearing?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Um, Rappaport.
Yeah.
Sorry, Bernie. Uh, Rappaport, um, LaRue. Barbara.
Oh, sorry.
Barbara's saying yes, okay. Gaffney.
Yes.
Um, Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
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 Got to do it married, huh? I'm sorry.
Um.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request as amended of Noria Energy applicant for special permit pursuant to sections four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishments, four point four point one point eleven, discharges from manmade structures into the wetlands, eight point three point five point four B, storage of liquid petroleum products with findings pursuant to section six point one point one, nonconforming uses to six point one point two, nonconforming structures and premises to permit an expanded gas station and convenience store with an interior fast order food establishment at fifty-nine to sixty-three middlesex turnpike located in the general business aquifer and water resources zoning district subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit C attached.
Second.
Um. Rappaport, yes.
LaRue.
Just keep it going.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Seven, zero. Yep.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of, uh, as amended of Noria Energy Corporation applicant for property located at fifty-nine, sixty-one, and sixty-three middlesex turnpike for approval of a site plan application with favorable findings pursuant to section six point one point one point one and section six point one point two point two of the zoning bylaw to allow for the demolition of existing buildings and facilities and the construction of a new five thousand forty plus or minus square foot convenience store, fast order food establishment, self-service gasoline dispensers with canopy, along with new parking areas, landscaping, stormwater management components and associated site improvements as reflected on the site plan entitled proposed site plan documents for Noria proposed fuel station and convenience store prepared by Baller Engineering dated September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, consisting of nineteen sheets, uh, site plans subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions. No.
Uh, Rappaport.
Second.
A second. Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Uh, yeah, but do we put in the, the?
The no TV thing in there too? I don't know if that's in there.
Um.
Right, yes.
No, I don't.
Um.
We did the no, too.
And if it's not in there, I'll say?
No, depending on if it's in there or not.
It's not in there at this point. Member Gaffney.
I mentioned, I mentioned that last meeting, so I don't know if the rest of the board members have any issue with that.
I do not.
I don't. I mean, there are already other gas stations at this point.
Yeah, the gas, gas station at Concom and too.
With the, the GSTV, okay.
Oh.
We don't, um, we're gonna have it's, okay, so right now.
I'll say no, yep.
Okay. Um, Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
So, six, one, zero. And then back up to the motion to, um.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, item eight point B, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point two point five point one, retail gasoline oil lubrication stations, the incidental sale and installation of tires and other automobile accessories, maintenance of minor repairs of motor vehicles, the zoning bylaw provisions for property at fifty-nine to sixty-three middlesex turnpike, Noria Energy Company, applicable.
Um, Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue. Gaffney.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Seven, zero, the motion passes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you for listening to our concerns and addressing those.
Yes, it's gonna look a lot better.
Wish you the best.
We'll be in touch, Sean, thank you. Uh, okay.
Right, moving on.
Minutes.
Minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Anyone have not?
Gaffney has not.
Gaffney has not, um.
Joe has not.
Joe has not.
Okay, we still have enough if you guys wanna vote on them.
Whatever.
You can vote.
Can I have a, a motion? Can we just do it all the same? Can everybody vote on?
Sure, you can do one motion with all of them and then they can abstain.
That's fine. Let's, can, I have a motion, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Um, Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Abstain.
Um, Cavino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Abstain.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
So, that is five, zero, two for minutes.
Okay. Um, discussion points, uh, planning department open positions. Do we have any up?
I just wanted to give an update to the board. Um, so we got one person. We are going to re, look at it, be more explicit about, um, the, um, salary, um, push it out more, talk to HR a little bit more about kind of.
Getting it on LinkedIn.
Getting.
Yeah.
Getting it on LinkedIn.
Getting it LinkedIn. And this, uh, my goal is to have this out bef, we talked about this, Madam Chair, having it out before Christmas so people can work on their resumes. Before Christmas to have, um, people work on it over their Christmas break and also have it, you know, positioned open until filled.
Yep, you know, a lot of people tend to take some time off during that time, so it makes sense to, to get it out as quickly as possible. Um, do any of the other members have any discussion points or things that we wanna bring up? Um, obviously, we voted in the beginning of the meeting. Joe, just to let you know, there is no meeting on the December fifteenth. Other than that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, Rappap, Rappaport, oh wait, what?
Yeah, it's just a time for recreation if we're doing some committee questions.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So, uh, recreation, uh, if anybody's been up to the Simons Park recently and has checked out the, uh, the treehouse.
I'm not.
I saw the pictures, it looked great.
You've been up there, Barbara, yeah, so just, just check it out. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's handicap accessible, so that's the great part about it. And, uh, you know, they're, they're looking to, you know, use it. Uh, it overlooks the pickleball courts, which is a nice view there. Um, but, um, yeah, take advantage of that. Uh, also, the, the Recreation Commission, uh, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, right before the, uh, the opening of the treehouse, we went up to a, a park called Overlook Park. Is anybody familiar with that? Okay.
The old Nike site, right?
The old Nike site, so what?
Yeah.
What they're planning to do, uh, the Recreation really hasn't played that park up. Uh, but there's three buildings on site and they're gonna raise two of the buildings. The players' building is gonna stay and then there's a garage building that's across from the players' building. But the buildings on the left-hand side of that, as you enter the, enter the park, it's basically to the right, uh, are gonna be raised. Uh, and we're kinda talking about what we're gonna, what may go up there or we just leave it, you know, green space, so there's some discussion on that. So, if you have an opportunity, if you haven't been up there in a while and go pass and up over, uh, the, the, the players' building to up the top of the hill, it actually connects with thirty-six acres of conservation. So, if you go up to the hill and then go just down the hill past the, the, uh, the chain and link fence is where it goes from the Recreation, uh, Park into the thirty-six acres of conservation. So, we went, we went in there, uh, uh, last weekend and we, we roamed around, did a little bit of hiking in there. So, I, I think it's a hidden gem and with those buildings that they'd be taking down because they use that for recreation storage now that they have the new building. Again, the, we're gonna try to, uh, you know, play that park up a bit. Again, a very, very hidden gem, the park plus the conservation, uh, are really something that, uh, I think the town should take a look at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are they gonna be submitting a site plan?
It, it, yeah, all depends on what, uh, what we're thinking to happen, is gonna be happening up there. You know, I, I went into, we went into one of the buildings that's gonna be raised just to see would it be worth keeping to make maybe indoor pickleball. You know, I'm a big pickleball guy, but, um, so, you know, I don't think the ceilings were high enough, but maybe you replace it with one building instead of, you know, when you tear down the two and make it such that you could have, you know, indoor programming, but have walls that you could remove to have indoor pickleball as well or indoor, you know, athletic type, uh, activity in there. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're discussing that, but just if you folks have any ideas, again, uh, you know, take a walk up there and, and enjoy that park. I think it's been a hidden gem and it really has been talked about because it's been used as mo- mostly storage. And, um, so thanks for that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gaffney. Thank you for your efforts on, on everything, um.
I know, uh, you know, there's been some, some great buzz about the, um, the treehouse, so I'm excited to, to get over there and take my kids there as well.
That thing that was paid with CPA funds.
Ernie. Ernie. May I have a motion, please, before somebody gets in trouble? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney. Cavino.
Uh, he's not here.
And Pemba.